Moving along, but I don't want to take up too much time. I tend to be a bit loquacious. Long Wharf, the history, our experience with Long Wharf has been positive all the way around. One of the biggest complaints I would get in the summertime from visitors who are parking is would go something like this, you know, dear trustee Corus, you had a wonderful weekend. My family came in, we spent two hours, we had dinner, we went to movies, we went to, you know, we took a walk around the village, beautiful place. I was shocked to find a $75 parking ticket as my exit fee. You know, and people complained bitterly about parking tickets all the time. This allows with Parkmobile and our experience on Long Wharf, if you want to park on Long Wharf as has been and will be up until now, the parking, paid parking starts at 10 o'clock in the morning. If you come into your grocery shopping early, you don't even have to participate in or do anything. It's just like it used to be four years ago. First hour, no matter what time you come is always free. The second hour, $4, $4, $6, $8. If you decide to stay for two hours and you commit $4 and you find yourself in a restaurant or sitting on the beach or enjoying an ice cream, 15 minutes before your, your, your session is up, you'll get a text from Parkmobile saying, hey, you've got 15 minutes left on your session. Do you want to add another hour? And you just hit yes. It's another $4 if you're there for three hours. And you go about your business. So you're protected from parking tickets, which is a $75 fee. You'd have to park for more than three full days of five hours per session on Long Wharf to get up to $66. So you know, so we think this is a benefit. I think it's good for tourists. They know what they're, they, they know what they're paying. They know, and it allows us to maintain. None of these parking lots are free to maintain. There's a cost associated with all of them. So Long Wharf has been a success. As I say, last year we had six, roughly speaking, 6,000 transactions in August, 6,000 in July. Remarkably, July and August come out within like $150 of each other. That the, the uptake of parking over those two months is almost identical. Very, very, very few people, and I did this in a report, come from the 11963 area code. And if you consider the 11963 area code as about double the population of Sag Harbor, I think we could extrapolate that about $350, $400, over $100,000 came from the, within, from within the village of Sag Harbor. So this is interesting, the interesting data for us to use for other things. New York City, Connecticut, Massachusetts, you can imagine up and down the East Coast are the main, were the main zip codes. So here's what we did with the money. So in 2022, we had 144,000 dollars and that represents the net proceeds from paid parking. And remember, we paid 30 cents for every transaction regardless of how long it is. If someone parks for just an hour and there's no revenue for the village, we're still paying the 30 cents. So if anybody wanted to have a look at all the spreadsheets, you can see lots of zeros or lots of 30 cents where the village had to pay up, and that's the balance. But it's not by the hour, it's just by the transaction. So we ended up at 90,000 transferred to an account for sidewalk repairs. That's what I'm saying. Instead of 30,000 that year, we had 120,000. We had the original 30 plus 90. We transferred 20,000 for drainage and we transferred another 20,000 for road repair. Similarly, the year before, we had sidewalk repairs, almost 60,000 drainage roads and general. And then we had Havens Beach, I don't know if anybody noticed, to, if you're a village resident, you have a sticker, you park on Havens Beach without any, without having to participate in anything. That's the exact same now as it has always been. But in the summer of 22, we were unable to hire anybody. We found no takers to sit in the little hut there to collect money from non-residents. So the summer of 22, there was zero, zero revenue on Havens Beach from non-residents. So we introduced Parkmobile last year. There were two ways of paying there. Either Parkmobile at $15 a day, or you came in with your resident sticker. And we made $5,000 and we used that money straight back into Havens Beach for maintenance down there. It was completely seamless. It was, it's an honor system. People would drive in. I'm sure our police officers go around and check. And it's worth noting as well that their equipment interacts with Parkmobile so they can scan a license plate as they go through a parking lot. And that'll tell them immediately whether that automobile has, has a session ongoing so that it's being parked legally. Also, it's worth noting at this stage that all of our volunteer fire department ambulances are completely exempt from this. They never pay anything regardless of where they live. If you're a volunteer in the village, you get to park for free. So this is what we're proposing, new parking. First of all, the ones that are not involved, there's no parking on any street in the village is part of this, a part of this effort. What we're looking at, and also the big parking lot at Kid Squid, which is Meadow Street, Rose Street, that big parking lot back there is not part of this effort. That is, that is deed restricted. We can't do it there. So that stays the exact same. So the lots we're looking at, Bridge Street, Five Bridge Street Lot, which is Gas Hall. And then we have the Meadow Street Lot, which we spoke about, that intersects with the Gas Hall. And that will be carrying the ADA requirement for those two combined lots. Then we have the Cross Street Lot and we have the Washington Street Lot. As I said right now, I went by Cross Street, three-day lot, absolutely jam-packed full. Not a space available for any business or anybody in the village. The Washington Street Lot, because it's two R and turns over, then it, that's, that's got plenty of parking available. Also down Bay Street, those two lots will be part of the, will be part of the effort as well. So you can see the numbers. We have about 95 spaces on Long Wharf. So this is going to increase the number of spaces in this program, almost, it will almost triple them. I'm just trying to do a quick math there. So there's an opportunity there for more turnover of spaces in the village. We have an opportunity to raise some revenue for the village so that we just came through tax season. We worked really hard here not to break the cap. We're living in an 8% from a municipal point of view, an 8% inflation world with a 2% cap. So something's got to give somewhere. We have to look at every, we have to look at every opportunity that we can to close the, to close this budget gap. And it can't always be just on the back of the residents of this village. So let's move ahead to the next. So these are just some sort of housekeeping items. Paid parking for the proposed zones will be the hours of 10:00 AM and 11:59 PM. Again, if you come into town in the morning before 10:00 AM, you can just come into your grocery shopping, whatever you want. If you want to stay till 11:00 AM, you'll just have to initiate a Parkmobile session, but it won't cost you anything. So you can park for free in the village any day of the week until 11:00 AM. After that, the park, there will be no parking meters. Some people are wondering, we're going to have parking meters everywhere? No. Go look at Long Wharf. There's a number of signs. There's two signs as you enter. One tells you it's Parkmobile and the other gives you an indication of why the village is doing this and what the village is going to do with the revenue. Once you're inside that zone, it's geofenced. When you open your phone, it'll, it'll know where you are and you can start a session. There's no paid parking on Main Street. As I said earlier, no streets are involved in this. Main Street stays the exact same. Everything about our proposal is modeled on Long Wharf and Havens Beach. It's the same app, it's the same everything. This app has been taken up by the town, Village of East Hampton. And Town of Greenport is going to be instituting this as well. The mayor reached out to us recently to find out what we were using and what we thought of it. We did a lot in the, back when Kathleen was mayor, Mayor Mokee. We interviewed quite a number of people and Parkmobile, we felt, was the most experienced and the most suitable provider. And we've been pretty happy with everything since then. Parking spots located in a designated paid parking zone are not, paid parking zone, zones are not available to rent for residential or commercial use. You can't just come in and take spots and come to the village. We do have street encumbrances. If somebody needs some spaces on Main Street for doing maintenance work or need to put a dumpster in, there is, there is a procedure for that. But these lots will not be available. We're going to keep the, the, everything is going to stay the same as Long Wharf from last year and the year before, where we have first hour is free, second hour is $4, third hour is $4, fourth hour is $6, and the fifth is $8. So if you stay for five hours, that's 14 and eight is $22 to stay for five hours in the village. Currently, I want you to think about Main Street. If I park, we, we look at parking on Main Street until 6 o'clock in the evening, it's from 6 AM to 6 PM. If you park and it's two-hour parking lot, if you show up on Main Street at a minute past four on a Saturday afternoon in July, you can keep that space all the way through till midnight because that's the end of parking. So you actually keep that space for eight hours for free from four o'clock till midnight perfectly legally because we don't mark cars after 6 PM. That stays the same. So people can still park on Main Street for eight hours, any day, like in the late afternoon into the evening. Someone comes into town for a movie, for dinner, for the theater, they can still do all that. And that's the same for all of the street parking that's lined. All the street parking that's not lined is pretty much a free-for-all. You can park there, I think, for any number of days until you're deemed to be abandoned. And all those lots, there are thousands of spaces in the village. We're talking about the core and we're talking about parking that we feel should be shared and not taken by certain people for days on end. The village residents will be given, we're proposing that residents of the village be given stickers for two cars, just like Havens Beach. You have a resident sticker. We spoke about that a little earlier. You get two stickers. So you have two cars in the village and you can park those in any of these lots without paying. These stickers will not apply on Long Wharf. Long Wharf is technically, is legally a street. And we are not allowed to offer discounts on streets in the village. We're only allowed to offer, allowed to offer discounts on what could be considered private lots or village-owned lots. So the proposal is that everybody can get two stickers and can buy another sticker, three, four, if they have a family of four, five, six automobiles, that they can buy stickers at, for a price that we haven't, we haven't really settled on yet. We need to, to figure that one out. And as always, Sag Harbor Fire Department, volunteer ambulance corps member, corps members, park for free with displayed vehicle ID. Helpful information, how to download the app, if you can figure, you can see that on, on the website. I'd love to go through that. And I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Corus. So with that presentation, I will open it up for comments and questions to the public. If anybody would like to step forward and state their name and where they live, they're more than welcome. Yes, Ellen?
Hi, Ellen Gervardi. I live on Burke Street in Noyak. I work on Main Street. I wear two hats. First time I'm going to talk, talk with the Main Street employee hat before I go to my Chamber of Commerce president hat. There was no mention of anything about the people who actually keep this village going, which is the employees who work here. I don't know how you're expecting the businesses. And I know I sound like I'm talking as Chamber President, but I'm really not. I'm talking as somebody who works here. How you expect employees to park? Right now, I sit in my office above the corporate office and express office. I see that back lot. Do me a favor, check your four bars July 5th. If you have two bars, I'll be shocked. I sit at my desk, I have no bars, not one. I can't get a phone call on my phone in July and August at my desk, right near that three-day lot. I can't make a phone call. I can't use an app. Nothing. There is nothing. It's my outgoing message actually says, if you're calling and it's the summer, leave a message and I'll get back to you when I walk through my front door because that's when all of my messages come through. So that's a problem. The app does not work well. I can't tell you how many people I personally have helped on Long Wharf to use the app, told them that they have to sign on to the special Wi-Fi that you supply on Long Wharf. Thank God, finally, because the first round, people were just walking around going, what do I do? There's nothing. So then we got that, that worked. Okay. So there's a problem with the app use. That's one thing. As an employee, I put my timer at an hour and 15 minutes because a lot of times I've gotten a ticket when I haven't even got to two hours. So I do an hour and 15 minutes and then I run out and I move my car around. So now if you're taking any of the spots on streets, employees are going to be parking on Main Street. They're going to be doing that. Main Street's going to be taken up and employees running out of the businesses, moving their cars every two hours. As an employee, I find this incredibly aggressive of the village to limit the parking this way and make it paid parking. I really don't know what people who work in a business that don't have the luxury that I have to run out and move their car are expected to do to try to park somewhere. It's hard enough to get people to work right now in the village. This is just going to make it hard. I don't know if it's, we're doing all of these parking lots and then you're going to back off and we're, you're thinking we're all going to walk away feeling, oh, they didn't do all the parking lots. Great. Maybe that's a psychological thing. I don't know. And I just feel like this is incredibly aggressive. As an employee, it's difficult. So that's with my village employee hat on. I really think that something needs to be done for employees of the village businesses because the village residents aren't going to need to park on Main Street if there's nowhere to go shopping because no one can get staff and they have to close. As far as President Chamber of Commerce, I'm going to read this letter if you don't mind. I know you all got it, but I do want, I was asked by the Chamber Board to read it into the record. So, dear, now as Chamber President, dear Mayor Gardella and trustees, it's in some haste we are ready to address this most recently proposed idea to create more paid parking to be established beginning this summer in the village. As representatives of the Sag Harbor Chamber of Commerce, we wanted to share some thoughts on proposed paid parking initiative for the village. First, we believe that involving the chamber from the outset could have provided valuable insights and collaborative solutions benefiting all stakeholders, residents, visitors, employees, and businesses alike. We were surprised as a board not to have been included earlier in the discussions or reached out to, especially considering our role in the local commerce landscape. We were brought in on winter wonderland and American cruise line plans very early to try to work through potential issues with our membership and get chamber consensus on those events that are happening in the village, but not on paid parking. However, we are very glad that this opportunity has been provided and we hope it will lead to a continued dialogue before any decisions are made. Given the time constraints and the busy season ahead for our members, it's challenging to gather comprehensive feedback by May 1st. Many are focused on preparing for the upcoming summer rush, a crucial period for the littleness. The Chamber Board is behind the thoughts expressed in this letter and we are happy to work with the village to get more feedback from our membership if that is desired. We're curious about the primary objectives of the project. Is it solely to fund the Gas Ball Lot or are there broader goals such as sidewalk improvements and enhancing pedestrian safety? And the document said, I know some of that was answered, and I do want to make another point. If we're going to do more work on sidewalks, I don't know what the parking situation is going to be where a lot of people park down near Breakwater Yacht Club. If that's not going to be allowed anymore. I walk on the street when I park down by Breakwater Yacht Club because that sidewalk is too scary to walk on. So that's an exciting one to think about. So back to the letter. We also urge exploring alternative funding avenues rather than rushing into additional paid parking without a clear plan. While acknowledging past parking initiatives, we wonder if recent data supports the necessity of implementing expanded paid parking everywhere. Concerns arise regarding accessibility for patrons, particularly, particularly those enjoying extended outings in the village, going to dinner and a show or a movie, et cetera. It's been stated there will still be free first hour, but what about someone who's coming for dinner and a movie or dinner and a show? There's also genuine concern about the Wi-Fi issues to access the parking lot app and the concern that there are many who may not know how to use an app or are not interested in doing so. At the top of our list of concerns is what about our employees? Staffing local businesses is already extremely difficult. Now added, they will have less spaces to park for free during their shifts. This should be a crucial point in the parking plan. We strongly feel that a business district employee lot or permit parking or parking permit sticker or code for the app or something needs to be done for any plan that is adopted expanding paid parking. We respectfully request the Board's consideration and allow sufficient time for inclusive discussions with the Chamber, our members, and other stakeholders. Comprehensive planning and professional guidance are essential to ensure a parking solution that addresses the needs of both businesses and visitors without creating undue burdens. It's signed by the entire Board. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just make a comment on that. We, we are sympathetic and I am especially, and I've talked to trustee Corus and the other board members about the employees, about this, how it affects them. And coming up with an option, as you said, where they can park, they, they can park their vehicle and they, and they work their shift. So we'll have to be communicating. If we're going to move along with something like that.
We were, we were thinking at one stage of having some sort of like placard that could be, each company could get us, that'd have to be shared. So when somebody.
I can't imagine that that app doesn't have something that you worked in that's code. And I also understand, like basically I work 10 to 6. I shouldn't be able to park for free at 8 o'clock because I'm hanging out at Paige or the cinema or something. I, I should have to, you know, then I'm just a resident. I'm not an employee. So then I realize you get into these complicated things of people have different shifts. Each business has to have how many per shift, what, which is why trying to get this done in this, and I know it doesn't feel short to you, but it does certainly feel short to those of us who are going to be very adversely affected by it. You're shorting out a time trying to take all of this information and work it out so that, you know, Paige has some sort of code for their lunch shift and their dinner shift, that the cinema has people who are working there until midnight or whatever, you know. I realize that the parking stops at certain times, you're saying you can park for eight hours, but we're going to end up with Main Street more parked up than it is right now with this plan as, as far as I'm concerned. It's going to be a mess. There has to be some sort of less paid parking situation, lot designated or some kind of code designated for employees. And certainly the village residents should not have to carry this burden. I totally agree with that. But you remain how much on Long Wharf? $100,000? Doesn't that pay for two years of the Gas Ball Lot? Which frankly, I've never parked in because it's another place I don't want to have to walk through. So, you know, there, there, there's just a lot that I feel you maybe have all been working on, but we haven't heard that. We haven't heard what you know are the issues. We haven't heard that you understand what we see as the issues. There's been no sit-down until now that I know about. So I think we're rushing this. My main point. Thank you.
Anybody else? Barbara, would you like to?
Hey, everyone. I'm Barbara Roberts. I live at 10 Siegel Hill Road, which is a Sag Harbor address, but it is in North Haven. 18 years ago, I was one of the co-founders of Safe Sag Harbor. Professionally, I am an expert on small business and entrepreneurship and create programs to help small businesses. I also last week did announce that I am running for mayor of North Haven. So I'm talking from both of those points of view. Eddie, one thing I wanted to ask you is you mentioned that $350 came from the 11963 zip code.
Yes.
And you kept saying that was Village of Sag Harbor residents. So the first question to you is whether or not free parking goes to the entire 11963 zip code or is your intent only people who are actually in the village?
Our intent is only people actually in the village.
And so I am here to really stress that we are your customers and the Main Street is the commercial center of the entire 11963 zip code. We would strongly recommend that you extend that to us. I have been walking around, talking to a lot of my neighbors in North Haven. It is very much on their mind and it would change our shopping and entertainment patterns. Many of us come to Sag Harbor almost on a daily basis. I myself typically eat out or do something in Sag Harbor at least five nights a week. Making a fee and having us pay for things would definitely change our shopping habits. I think it opens up that we'll be on the Shelter Island theory. We would be in Bridgehampton or Noyak. So would strongly request and suggest for the benefit of the businesses here that 11963 be totally included to be free in the service. And then the second point that I would like to make builds on what Ellen said. I think this is too much, too fast. I certainly respect the need to create more revenues. It is a very difficult time for anyone to be running good local government. But I would suggest that we, if anything, we phase this in. I particularly think 51 Meadow parking lot is one that should be postponed that is used by any of us who go shopping at the IGA. I mean, due to the extra walk to walk further would be difficult. And I think one of the reasons why you don't see 11963 very much in your parking fees that you collected on Long Wharf is that we know all the secret places to park without getting, having to pay. So the more you close that down, I also stress what Ellen said, that Main Street will become a disaster. I never park on Main Street now. I always park in the back parking lots. And I think many, many locals actually do that. We tend to park. So what Main Street can be more for the tourists and people who don't know all the nooks and crannies of us. So again, like Ellen, I think it needs a little bit more time and thought, but particularly would just lobby that the entire 11963 be considered part of the free parking program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Let's see. Nada, you want to come up? I'll get to everybody. So please be patient.
Start from the first one. Let your way back.
Nada Barry, the Wharf Shop. I have just a couple of things to say. One is last year, I drive every day basically over the bridge and I checked the number of cars on Long Wharf from the end of Columbus Day through Thanksgiving. And during the daytime, it was almost empty in relation to the rest, the other summertime. And that happens to be one of the prime times when people start to shop for Christmas in our village. So if anything, I beg of you to end any parking plan after Columbus Day weekend and not Thanksgiving. I think I mentioned that even last year. That's the thing that's forward, one of the meetings are too late.
Yep.
That's number one. Two, I just want to back everything Barbara Roberts, and I didn't know what you were going to say, but I'm very concerned about the 11963 people. They are our customers. And I don't know the answer to this. I'm very for, I'm grateful that we have made the money with Long Wharf and possibly you add the Gas Ball Lot, maybe. I don't know. And also I'm extremely concerned about my employees and our shifts are very varying. And whether there can be a, something they hang like a disabled, that you can always check if they're really working here or what. It might be one answer to do it because you don't want people to use it when they're not actually working. I understand.
Thank you, Nada.
Thank you.
April, you, you want to come up?
Thank you very much, April Gornick, representing the church at 31 Madison Street. And I want to just read a letter that was submitted today so that everyone can hear it. I also want to agree strongly with what Barbara Roberts said. You're 11963 constituents and I do mean yours. I mean, everybody thanks of Sag Harbor is their town, their village, their, you know, beloved center of this little universe that we all enjoy. And to have it be, to have it not recognized, that seems unnecessary or punitive. And I, I do agree that some, some measure of consideration was to be that. I also agree with everything that everyone else has said so far. But to just quickly read this letter, dear Mayor Gardella and Village Trustees, this letter concerns the issue of paid parking proposals being explored at the workshop tonight, which I am regrettably unable to attend. This was something that Sherry had written. As we help you surely now, the church is an integral part of a constellation of cultural organizations that are a huge draw to our village, cleaning Bay Street, the cinema of the church. We operate in service to our local community, day visitors and tourists, and help foster a positive character and regard for Sag Harbor while keeping alive opportunities to gather in communities that are vital and essential year-round. The economic impact of our organization on Sag Harbor Village is similarly immense. According to our recent visitor survey from September 23, more than 60% of our 17,000 annual visitors visit the church more than three times a year and more than 70% spend at least $50 on other visits, businesses, restaurants, and organizations. Each time they visit, half of those report that they spend more than $100. To put this all together with the help of the Long Island Arts Alliance, we can estimate that the church alone brings at least $2.34 million annually to the village economy while creating at 37 jobs per year. We feel this is an extremely conservative example because it was just done as a kind of a ballpark, you know, for this, for the purpose of this letter. I know that when we did an economic impact study for rebuilding a cinema, they've all parked it in, I know, even here. So, and, and granted, that is open longer hours than the churches, but it's all part of a kind of a fabric that draws people here to the village. Our audience comes for an exhibition, concert, or event and then dines and shops, commonly spending upwards of four hours in the village on each visit. I can attest to this from the people that I talk to. Almost everybody that comes to an event comes and, and looks for dinner, has had dinner or wants to wander around, et cetera. Our staff is here, knows the nine hours a day all year round. Not to mention our vendors in contract, most of these individuals we play are access to parking. To that envelope, our key points we'd humbly like to put forward for consideration. Can this, can the solution not be rushed? We also find that this is, this is going too fast. I know that Labor, I mean, that Memorial Day is coming, so. This is an issue of vital importance to the village and to benefit from additional time to research alternative solutions, which is grants, other revenue sources, and other parking solutions as well, such as value funding. In terms of grants, we briefly, Susan and I, just before the meetings, we're talking to Ed about the possibility of giving a big grant for permeable sidewalks. Permeability in this kind of service. Permeability in this kind of servicing in, uh, climate change prone, especially climate prone area like this are very likely possibilities. So if we could, I mean, there, there are other creative solutions that we think we could look into to help the village. And it would be in fact more long-term and less band-aiding. Um, if you're above that impossible, maybe make every attempt to make paid parking fees as low as possible, preferably more than, no more than a dollar an hour, or at a descending hourly rate, that is like two dollars for the second hour, one hour, one dollar for each hour thereafter. Please consider the impact of paid parking on cultural visitors or tourists, those spending more than four hours, who are already spending significant amounts of money. Employees, as we've already discussed. Inclusion and equity, because for the economically disadvantaged, paid parking could make Sag Harbor a cost-prohibitive place to visit and work. Um, and then residents, if possible, should be provided with digital or virtual permits. And that designation, residents, should extend to our year-round municipalities like Neuyac and North Haven. Thank you for your consideration. In addition to your hard work on this matter and your valuable service to Sag Harbor Village, and it's signed for you, Sherry Pascorrell, our executive director, the founder of this all. Thank you for listening.
I just have, I have a question, just a general question or comment. What, what, people that go to the cinema or go to, say, go out to eat? Or how are they dealing with the two-hour? Because most of the lots and on the street, Main Street, is two-hour parking during, during, right? From six.
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
I, I'm really not sure because a lot of our.
They're getting, I mean, there's people that are getting ticketed for seventy-five dollars, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's, it's like, we were saying, the audience was saying, people who live here park in their secret spots or, you know, wherever. Or they, or they deign to walk a few blocks.
Right. What I'm trying to, what I'm, the point I'm trying to make is that there has to be a balance. Like, there's got to be a balance where it's worth parking in a lot, where you're going to pay four dollars for that extra hour, rather than take a chance on getting a ticket if you're parking on Main Street. I'm just, that's all, the only point I'm trying to make is there could be a balance where it's actually better for you to be in one of, a lot that, that's paid parking than it is to park somewhere where you're going to get a ticket for two hours. The, the whole employee thing is, is a whole nother bridge to cross because I, I feel, believe me, and we've talked about this, about doing something for the employees and also the residents that live on Main Street. We've had people come before the board and pass board meetings and say, I have nowhere to park. I live above Main Street. I can't find a parking spot. So that's another consideration.
Yeah.
There, there's a lot of street parking as well. Like, we really focus, this is obviously talking about paid parking tonight. But outside of the paid parking, uh, arena, there is a phenomenal amount of street parking. Like, where the church is, the first paid parking would be Washington Street, which is a small lot of twenty-three or twenty-four automobiles. So you'd have to then go all the way to the other end of the village to find paid parking. Whereas everything south of the church is just free. The streets and parking, that's available. Um, some people have said to me, we don't have a parking problem, we have a walking problem. And we, we probably have a little bit of both. It has been my experience looking at this over three years that strangely, people are willing to park all the way at the end of Long Wharf and walk to Fishers. Right? And that's considered fine because it's sort of within the downtown core. But if you take that same distance and drop it south of Fishers, you're way out past the library. Nobody, uh, wants to do that. And so what we're trying to do is encourage people. I live on Howard Street, I can walk to it, I can walk here in five minutes. Nobody parks on Howard Street unless it's, um, fireworks or ragamuffin. So there is this peripheral parking, and it's also available to all the employees as well as you push out from the core. There are like thousands of parking spaces in the village, like all the way down past the hotels and motels. All, that's all free parking. Um, so what we're trying to do is strike a balance here. We're taking this core downtown parking, and I think it'd be in the, in the interest of the commercial district not to have three-day parking downtown. I don't know who that helps, I never understood it. And I think it doesn't help, it doesn't help, it might help people going to the city on the jitney.
It helps people a lot going into the city.
But do you, if I go to.
I don't stay, I don't personally do that, but I know a lot.
But if I go to Southampton to leave my car there and take the jitney, I have to pay to use their parking lot. And so it's a philosophical question is whether the village should be providing that service? Or should we be using this very valuable land to provide a service to the commercial district?
I mean.
This is the discussion we're having.
This is the discussion.
Yeah.
The other, you know, the other thing too, April, is we, we were putting thirty thousand dollars a year into a sidewalk fund. And when, you know, I've been on the board now, it'll be six years this June. The sidewalk situation has, has been horrible. I mean, we've had, we had sidewalks because we were doing it piecemeal. It was almost as though we were changing spots and going along and, and get, taking care of the worst spots where somebody would trip and fall, or where there was an issue, or, you know, something that had been just deteriorated and just running around in circles. So with the revenue that comes in from paid parking, it gives us that, that boost to, to repair more sidewalks, more curving. There's a project that we're, we're looking to do around the school, where the kids walk from the school to the park, that, that sidewalk there. And I've been, again, I've been screaming up and down since the day I got in office, something needs to be done there. Now we're finally getting revenue in where we can start to invest in those things.
Well, again, that's why I brought, I brought up the permeable, um, surface, which we should be using anyway. We shouldn't be hardening surfaces anywhere in this village. It's so, it's so counterproductive to what we're looking at down the road.
I'm open to trying anything that's going to help.
I think that's a great idea. And we'll need a certain amount of, uh, we'll, we'll need to, to arrive at a certain amount of funding before we, because we can't do that piecemeal. Right now, we're patching concrete. And I agree with you that if we had, you know, we, we, if we had a, if we had a master plan for the village and we could pick out streets, we could fund them, but the money's got to come from somewhere. I mean, the, all these projects, and we've just been through this sewer project, you know, it's millions and millions and millions of dollars. And it's all very fine to talk about these things, but if we want to actually make progress, we're going to have to come up with a funding plan. Grants are one thing, but it's very, very difficult to get grants for municipal infrastructure like that.
I wish we could make thirty thousand dollars a year to cover new sidewalk improvements and to cover the eighty-four thousand cost of the gas ball lot. Are those the two, are those the two tranches that you?
You know, we'd also like to be able to develop cycling lanes. I mean, initially, when we brought in paid parking, it was street furniture. The whole idea was transportation. And in my mind, the most basic form of transportation is walking. And once we get the walking sorted out, then we can go to the bike, the, the cycling. And we can go to street furniture and everything else. That was the thesis behind all of this in the beginning.
But paid parking is about revenue, revenue for things that you want to get done. But it's also, there's also a question to me of like, what does this, what does this village represent? And it's just.
Could I say something here? There, there's another side of it, which should benefit the, um, merchants, is that we're trying to spread out the use. In other words, if, now, in the ideal world, you know, people would, people come and go at different times. It's not going to happen, of course. But one, one purpose of this is if, say, you can park until eleven for free, there may be some people who would then, um, will want to come into the village a little earlier than they might otherwise. And also to encourage turnover. Because I don't know how many people, like, say, at the five and dime, how many people come? I think a lot of people just come and go to that store and leave. That's one of the other overarching concerns here is, is moving. It's keeping the, uh, the, uh, spots going.
Turnover.
Yeah.
And I, I realize that's difficult, uh, and a little to pull off. But that, this is not completely revenue-driven, if, if that's your question. And I agree that we have other, um, goals. Well, I think we have other goals.
Thank you, April.
Thank you.
Let's see. Uh, Susan, you want to respond?
I think she's saying row two next.
Like, I can.
Uh, it's me, I'm part of the cinema. And Genevieve can answer the questions about what we think our patrons are doing at the cinema towards the part.
That's what I'm curious to hear about, if somebody comes to see a movie, where are they?
Yeah. And let me just say something, and then I'm going to turn it over to her. She also has a letter to read. Um, I spent the last two weeks looking at small towns. And I've looked at about ten of them now. And they're all different types of solutions than these small towns. It's much harder to park in a small town in a big city because you don't have as many options. And, um, my concern is the speed with which we are going to put a maximum of twenty hours for people that go to institutional uses and spend more than a few hours. Um, that economic development study that was done for the cinema I sent to all of you was done in two thousand seventeen. Well, we can investigate updating it. If we're not careful, it's going to kill the, the golden goose that's made this village start to function year-round. And, um, we just need to do it slowly, carefully, methodically. And I hope you will hit the comments tonight. And I'm a parker on the streets, I don't park in blocks, and I walk everywhere. Anything we can do to encourage people to walk into town, whether they're employees, letters, visitors, whatever, it's educational. Hopefully, we can move in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Susan.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Genevieve Giliflor, and I'm the executive director of Sag Harbor Cinema. Um, I work at ninety Main Street here. And, um, to answer your question about the two-hour parking situation, it's there, it is quite difficult for a lot of our patrons. People miss movies, you know, one partner is parking the car and the other one's coming in. Or they leave in the middle of the film to move the car. This is the same thing that we as staff people have to do. Over the summer was obviously our busiest season. And I have several parking tickets because I'm in the middle of a lunch with somebody or, you know, and same thing with our staff. And I have to say that the gas ball parking place is one place where our staff feels like they can park there. Some of them have, you know, longer hours. Sometimes, you know, last year, we had to have people working almost ten hours, that kind of thing. And it's just hard to keep, we all set our alarms, we all go out, move the car, come back. You know, meetings are disrupted, all of these things. So, and the patrons as well. Um, and so we always, everybody's waiting for the six o'clock or four o'clock um, to be able to park and like, and leave their car there at that time. But it does affect the people who are going to the cinema. Um, and especially in the summertime, when we tend to have more films in the beginning of the day, um, and every day of the week. So.
Okay, question. So if they could park for five hours, would that be a benefit? Without, without running the risk of getting a ticket?
Um, obviously, it would be, but, um, I mean, I just, it just, I don't know. I think also, you know, you're getting texts and things in the middle of, for us in the film, and that's always disruptive and it's, you know, um, but it has been disruptive so far right now. Um, so I did send a letter to, to read into the record. And so, like, I'll just go ahead and read that now. Um, dear Mayor Gardella and Sag Harbor Village Board of Trustees, as the executive director of Sag Harbor Cinema, I'm writing to ask you to please consider what a full economic impact and what the experience will be for visitors to Sag Harbor Village, should you implement paid parking around key places in the village. While the main parking lot behind the cinema will not be directly affected, the amount of people looking to park there will dramatically increase because the spaces are free. With the average movie running time at about two hours, it is already challenging for our patrons and obviously staff to come to the movies because of the timed parking. But to add paid parking on top of that may make them think twice about coming at all. As a nonprofit organization, the Sag Harbor Cinema greatly relies on the patronage of our audiences to stay open. As a destination, we attract visitors from beyond the boundaries of our village and our county. Last year alone, the cinema's attendance grew fifty percent from the previous year, with about sixty-six thousand people coming through our doors. We are open three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, making a vital economic impact to our community by providing jobs and creating synergy with other shops and restaurants on Main Street. Neighborhood, uh, businesses, um, told us that they stay open in the winter months because the cinema is open. Adding parking costs to our customers' ongoing experience will definitely be felt. Paid parking has discouraged people from spending time in the village, paying for parking as well as for tickets, dinner, drinks, dessert, babysitting, et cetera. Adding paid parking to the cost to attend our events, for example, we currently have a dinner and movie promotion going on now, which we do in the, uh, winter and spring months. Will discourage attendance, especially for those who are on fixed incomes or who have limited resources. Having accessible free parking for all provides equity for everyone who must do business in the village, not just those who can afford to pay for parking. It is our hope that you would delay the implementation of a paid parking strategy in Sag Harbor until after a thorough impact study is conducted. We also feel it is too soon to institute parking meters as the high season is almost upon us. And we definitely feel it is detrimental to charge for parking during the off-season, January to May, when it is already a challenge to bring audiences to Main Street. Please consider other solutions, such as utilizing valet and one or two of the lots are creating off-site parking and using a trolley to bring in patrons. If the village wishes to still consider having paid parking, please make the amount affordable. Um, for example, a dollar an hour, so it is not cost prohibitive to our pa, uh, patron to attend our scene. Please read this into the record and thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Genevieve. Thank you. Ken? Ken Dorf?
My name's Ken Dorf, and I've been involved off and on in transportation issues since moving here over thirty years ago. I used to go to Sag Harbor Transportation Committee. Um, and I'm, first of all, really grateful that this is happening. And you're, what you're saying is music's my ears. It makes my heart hit a pattern, want to hear about biking and walking and that sort of thing. Just, just a little background, uh, back in the nineteen ninety's, is that long ago? Eric Cohen and I were on the Sag Harbor, we were the representatives for the East End Transportation Council. And I'll never forget a presentation where a guy put up a picture of the monopoly free parking sign. And he told us, he'd done the analysis, that free parking in the United States, the opportunity cost of free parking is greater than what we spend on healthcare. So this is a really giant economic issue. And it's congestion pricing that you're talking about. London did congestion pricing twenty years ago. It took New York, and hugely successful. Took New York twenty years just to, to, to follow London's example. This really works. And the other thing is, I've talked to people who've done paid parking all over U S and St. Petersburg and Hanover and, uh, uh, it's, it's popular. After it is, people get very upset because they say, oh, I have to pay for something I've never paid for. But once it's implemented, people like it, just like congestion pricing, for the reason you say. I'm sitting at Sen, it's two hours, what am I going to do with my car? I can sit in my phone and add four dollars. And I'm sorry, four dollars a restaurant at Sen and party is not a lot of money inside of a park. Sorry, but I have just had trouble with that. So I think that this is something we really, really need to go forward with. What, one of the, one of the things that I heard, and I think it's really important, is about employees. Because that, that is an issue. And there, I think there are two responses to that. One is that rather than considering just the village, think about the school district. The school district is a set zone, and a lot of the people have moved out of the village and can't afford it because they found them in North Haven and Neuyac. And that's a logical audience, it's the school district. So people, employees live in the school district or other people in the school district want to come to the village, there might be some special deal, they can petition. You know, I, I'd like the village deal because I'm sixty years old and I live in Neuyac. You know, so make, make exceptions for that sort of thing. Uh, by the way, I'm looking in the village right now, South of Village Res, Nazareth, just, just so that you know. Um, the other thing I want to say is that the critical thing that you said, Aidan, is integrating, walking into this. When we were on the transportation committee, which no longer exists fifteen years ago, we looked at this question of how people get in the village. And I think it's important that you analyze it. I mean, we do need some data, like we did for the schools, where do people live? How do they get there? Uh, and we, we showed that two or three city blocks, even two city blocks from Sen, there is always parking, always. And a lot of these employees could walk to it. If they were in Manhattan, they would take the subway and walk to a box to their work. So asking a twenty-three-year-old to walk to a box is not a lot to ask. Again, for, there should be exceptions, people who have to carry things, whatever. I really believe making it easier for the employees, that's an important subgroup. Uh, but then the question is, how do we do that? And this is where I'm hoping the money will go, not just repairing sidewalks, but thinking about how to make it. When Fred Kent was here, do you remember that? The con crash brought him in. Uh, he said Sag Harbor didn't have a parking problem, it had a strategy problem. And one of the ideas he had, and I remember just talking about this, was the area, the cultural area between the Wailing Museum and the, uh, library of making that a plaza, so that you would feel that that was the entrance to Sag Harbor rather than down at the, the Main Street. And if you do something like that, people are more likely to walk from beyond the Wailing Museum. Because it's, it's, there's always parking up there. I know that, I always walk. Uh, so, so I think that the use of the money, even though it's not the main purpose, because rationalizing parking is a really serious and noble purpose. It's used, managed intelligently. But using the revenues to make it a more walkable, but why do people drive from Bay Street Theater to Barron's Club? Because you can't walk. How long is that? It's not even a city block. You know, that's insane that there's no sidewalk between. And if, if Barron's Club is allowed to, to be put up with a no sidewalk, who, who is thinking? Now you're thinking. And this is what I, I want to see a transportation committee set up. And this is what I wanna see, a Transportation Committee set up. I want people to think seriously about how to get people to walk and find how to get to the place where parking exists. If anyone's interested, if you're interested in learning more about parking, there's an amazing book that changed my life called High Cost or Free Parking by the parking guru Donald Shoup of UCLA. And it really makes you think about, you know, and as you know, how we just oversuch nice cars in this country is beyond belief. So you have to really think about getting people to walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Sir, right here in the front. I don't know your name.
Jeff Sandro, mayor of X-Male, North Haven, November, November here. And I commend what you're trying to do. I think paid parking is a good thing. As a non-resident, I'm willing to contribute to that. However, I'm not sure it's still gonna give you a parking spot. So whether I pay for it or I don't pay. It's become a significant problem. And I think the app that you're trying to use can help it in some respects, but I'm not sure how much sophistication it has. For example, on Main Street, where I think I have a significant problem, does the app have the ability to change times based on the time of day that you're allowed to park? For example, I pull out to a lot, look on my phone, this is a fifteen and twenty-minute time lot from ten in the morning till when Chabonis closes. And after that, it's just two, maybe three hours. You know if it has the ability to do that?
It has a certain amount of functionality like that. My fear with that, and I understand what you, because parking has a different value at different times of the day depending on what the community is doing, is in some respects introducing this is difficult enough and confusing and would appear to be for some people quite confusing in the using of an app. And introducing sort of tertiary applications is something that we could look at down the road. I feel like Long Wharf people have adopted the app quite easily. If it hasn't been, none of the issues that were that were spoken about beforehand came to fruition. So. But I know where you're going and we can get much more sophisticated with that.
Because as somebody that uses the village free shop to run to restaurants, my wife works here. There are different demands at different times of day. There's a different demand if there's an event going on at Bay Street or a very popular theater with a lot of people when there is during the day where people want to stop in Chabonis for a half an hour tournament. So I think down the road, I think that sophistication we should look at that can dynamically change parking times a lot based upon the needs.
The one thing you can change now is the cost per hour. I mean, we tried, the idea, which is worth it, if you look at the data from Long Wharf, the most popular time period is three hours. There's some for, there's very few five hours. And so by using that data, then you can come back in and sort of redesign, so to speak, the parking profile of the village. But sort of changing it on the fly like that, I just wondered, do you create more confusion? Cause more people to get parking tickets and then you sort of, the circle of grievance goes around and around.
Is there a reason why you can't use the app in the back parking lot? I know you mentioned.
It's deed restricted.
Deed restricted.
That's, I need to get more details on that. My understanding is that when it was granted to the village for the use of the village, we're not allowed to build anything on it and we're not allowed to charge for parking there. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's the case. And I also think that having a big, you know, having a well of free parking in the village like that is not a terrible thing either to balance things out. Then it's two hours only. So, you know, you sort of, you know, if you wanna go to, into the supermarket, your supermarket shopping, you're sort of free parking. Because none of us spend more than an hour in Chabonis, I would imagine.
Yeah, that's true. But, you know, and I don't mind walking. I don't mind parking on Bay, on Long Wharf if I have to go in the back. But I don't wanna do this, I'm carrying three bags of groceries. So they have a few parked spots in the back, you can get one of those. But in the middle of the summer, when everyone's here and it's, this has become one of the most popular villages in the land. We all know that. We all want it. We all love to live here. It's just impossible. Particularly at night in restaurants. I frequent a lot of restaurants in Norwich. And it's, it's, there's just no place for parking. Whether you charge them or you don't charge them.
Well, we will be releasing a hundred and twenty between the Gaspar Lot and Cross Street. There's like about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty spaces that are now designated as three-day, which in my mind is permanent parking. They will become part of the turnover. So that's a lot of, that represents quite a number of parking spaces in the village that will be available for everybody to use as opposed to a select few who just keep them.
So this went to my wife and I spent two weeks in St. Bart's. There is no place to park for the public at St. Bart's. The restaurants are all busy and everyone has valet parking. And I think the village should seriously look at valet parking. I did some research on Google and there's a app now that can log you in, charge you, and retrieve your car all through an app on the phone.
The question becomes, where does the valet park the car?
Haven's Beach.
So you could do remote valet parking with the shuttle. The last thing you want is to bring more cars downtown. Like I can transact, I can pull into a parking space in three seconds. If I have to transact with the valet downtown, I gotta get the ticket, I gotta get the, I've gotta do the transaction, hand off the keys. The car has to be, and then, you know, valet parking has been mentioned a number of times this season. And if I've mistaken the context, forgive me, but as if it would be a less expensive option. And it just won't be. I mean, it's gonna be more expensive than.
And people will pay for it. It's twenty euros minimum to park valet in St. Bart's.
And people will put a tip on top of that.
Yep. And there is tons of parking down Bay Street and at Haven's Beach.
Yeah. I mean, there are these.
You can retrieve it like you do in Uber. When you're sitting, you finished your dinner, you put it in and.
And you can also free book a space.
And if you made a deal with the restaurants, they could give them a rebate on their check when they checked out, validating that they had a meal and they're valid. So it's something I think we should look at, or you should look at.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank Peter.
I think it could be a real boon to help and solve the problem on Main Street. Particularly in the end of the summer when there's a million people. And I have lots of friends that say, come Memorial Day, I'm not even saying go anymore because I just can't park. So I do think it affects.
Thank you, Jeff. Peter, Pacicello, please.
I'm not gonna read you my resume. I'm not gonna write, give, share a letter. And you're not gonna hear about my little vacation. So this is a perfect source of revenue for the village, which we badly need. I think I'm the only one who has spoken, who is a resident of the village, maybe Ken, the other one. I don't understand having difficulty, if you live in the one-one-nine-six-three, Eric Cohen. I don't understand why four dollars is put there to them. And the first hour is free. And I live in the East Hampton, thought of the village. So I'm in that town and pay taxes to that fair. I also pay seven hundred and fifty dollars every year to park at the beach because I don't live in the village. And I think we should, my uncle of that, when we decide whether or not we as a village are, people who choose our village. And we need to maintain our sidewalks. And that's not free. And that's all I can say.
Thank you, Peter. Will?
Greetings. Thank you for this meeting. Will Sharp, who was in place. I second what Ken Dorff was saying. I appreciate the aggressive tactics or program that you're suggesting. Because we're met with a very aggressive environment every summer. These automobiles. And everybody says the same thing. It's horrible. Ken also mentioned the book, The High Cost or Free Parking. It's one of several books that are addressing small-town USA. And there, the author's thesis is, you can charge to discourage abuse of parking charred Main Street to get to the flats, et cetera. It's not a revenue generating thing. It's a circulation issue. Most progressive planners in America today, you'll read, are talking about exactly that. Is that we need to penalize parking in a circular, not encourage it by making it easier. That sounds like a neth, but. I went to Woods Hole recently with my family and they sent out a, we went to the Marine Land, and they sent out a notice that said, please park at Walmart. And at Walmart, they have obviously lots of parking, can a jetty, because they're around all day. So we were six hours, the laboratory, restaurants, et cetera. And I think that the solution here, one of the solutions, is Haven's Beach. You do not need valet parking. We need an electric jetty, which you can buy, just like we bought a new fireboat, et cetera. That's needed. The point is that we could park, and I really am sympathetic to the employees of this town. I think that would be one place that might be a relief now, I'm not sure. But it's a, it's a kind of a freebie right now. It's available. The middle part of Haven's Beach is unoccupied except by seagulls and the coral that comes in the year. So if we had a loo that came through, I think it could be very inexpensive. At Woods Hole, I think we paid twenty-five cents, twenty-five cents per passenger or something. And one day a week it was free. We happened to get a free date. And my family, we were smiling at how delightful it was to get on public transportation, go into this cul-de-sac, which you can park, but you'll go some hell to try to park. So I think that in these investigations, Haven's Beach is, I know we've talked about it before, but I'd like to see something like that. I was in Los Angeles in the nineteen eighty-four Olympics and everybody said it's gonna be hell. Peter Umaroff did a remarkable thing, which was he didn't change much except that he put a lot of parking places and buses to get you to the venue. And it was so successful that they made a lot of money. That was one of the few Olympics that made a lot of money because they didn't rebuild. But the parking, it became a social thing that we parked. And in Los Angeles, that's kind of a strange thing because you wanna drive everywhere. I just encourage that thought. But I also wanna compliment you're doing this because I think that the, the not doing it is, we're gonna, we're gonna just do the same issue. And I think you have to meet the aggressive parking problem with a problem that you have. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Will. Thanks very much, Will. Lisa, and then I'll get to Jesse.
Hi, my name is Lisa Fields. I am a, excuse me, a commercial building owner at one-fourteen Main Street, Sag Harbor Variety Store. While I'm not a resident, I am definitely a taxpayer. And as I have stated before, I am against any additional paid parking in the village. As a struggling small business, we need our village leaders to support us, to help us to survive. Paid parking will hurt the small, independent, owner-operated businesses that Sag Harbor prides itself on having. I very much appreciate that you're not including Main Street in the paid parking proposal. However, rushing to implement this right before the busy season is wrong. Have you spoken to the taxpaying building and business owners who will be the ones who are truly affected by this decision? This is our livelihoods that we're talking about here. None of you have reached out to me personally. And my family has had a business on Main Street for fifty years. And as Barbara Roberts said, people will change their spending habits. They're gonna go elsewhere. And it's just the perception. Local people are gonna hear, you have to pay to park in the village. They're not gonna take the time to find out when, where, how, and why. They're gonna go somewhere else. Additional paid parking may just be the tipping point to put some of us out of business. We can have the nicest sidewalks around, but if the stores are vacant, what difference does it make? I beg of you to reconsider. Thank you.
Jesse?
Hello, everyone. Jesse Montzoga, building owner, business building owner, as well as multiple properties within the village to offer workforce housing that do not necessitate parking for those employees. But I also have multiple other employees that live outside of walking distance and will need to be able to park somewhere. And in hearing what everyone had to present today, some good ideas and some ideas that I think are hard to implement in such haste of what has been proposed today. So one idea that I did want to kind of focus in on was to be able to create some kind of employee-staff parking area with a transport so that we get them further out of the village. And then that would relieve multiple spaces for other people that are coming through, for residents that are coming in for an hour, two hours. The main issue is our staff are using up those three-day lots, right? Which then pushes out the next people who are going to be the grocery store person, somebody going out to dinner, lunch, a film, an event. And then those people are then taking up the two-hour parking and flipping that over. If we really start at the beginning and relieve the staff parking side first, it should chain out and relieve a lot more spaces. There seems to be a lot of revenue being built out from this parking proposal, which then, to me, feels like it can more than pay for that jetty situation out to Haven's Beach, Massacheway Park, other areas that's so far out that it wouldn't even affect the residual thousand spaces that, you know, Aiden is talking about that are within walking distance, right? I don't think our staff needs to be within that. They can be further out. So I just wanna be able to propose that I would definitely push for the jetted-out situation where it is totally free for them and offer it because it would relieve more spaces for the paid parking, for the towns to make that harder, right? Those are just my, my thoughts.
It's a great idea. I think it's a great idea. And also, employees probably stay longer than anybody, right? I mean, like eight hours.
Eight to ten-hour shifts.
Right?
I'm myself, you know, I'm here twenty hours a day before I get home.
So it's like someone said, if you could take that subset out, it's probably will be a lot easier.
Yeah.
The question is finding, right, is finding the spot to do it.
Hundreds of people, and that's hundreds of spaces within the walking distance that are gonna be relieved for more customers, for all of our businesses. So it could easily automatically change everyone's thought process that, wow, there's a lot of parking spaces on Main Street. Because if we create this issue now and we create haste to then make paid parking, I promise those employees are the ones that are gonna be parking on Main Street and taking up Main Street spots for, from four P.M. on. And it's, that's terrible. That's, that's gonna hurt all of our businesses from the staff taking over the spots that really should be for the people coming in to spend money in our village.
Right. I wonder if anybody's figured out roughly how many employees in the summer, the height of the summer, there are. How many employee cars if you could just stop and count them all up?
Just, just in my spaces alone, I have a hundred employees. Now again, half of them walk or live in town.
No, I mean cars. I mean spots.
Cars, so are easily thirty.
Yeah.
Just, just my spaces. That doesn't even include the cinema that might have, you know, you know, the green room has one employee, but that's still one car. But every other business, you're talking about dozens and dozens of cars. And that relief should really be thought, like, focused out first.
Two hundred, three hundred spots would make a big difference.
Yes.
I think Haven's Beach is virtually the only place available. The park won't do it. We approached them. The high school won't. The Catholic church won't.
I think we, yeah.
Haven's Beach should be built out.
I think we have to be careful though with Haven's Beach. There's a residential area there.
The residential area.
We gotta be, we gotta limit that if we're gonna do something there. I mean, we can consider it, but I just wanna be sensitive to the residents in that area.
Absolutely. And I think by investing into that space with proper lighting, proper sidewalks, and all of that, we can create something great. And I think the residents would rather have residents parking there, working employees parking there than just, you know, random other people that don't wanna pay for paid parking in town. So they're gonna go over there and then that's, you know.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you. Yeah. Do, Kate, do we have anybody on Zoom that wants to? Chris?
I want to get to Zoom because people have been waiting for a while too.
Hi, my name is Chris Seifert. I'm the deputy director at Bay Street Theater. Can you hear me okay?
Barely. Is that our, our side or?
Tracy Mitchell asked me to. Read a letter. Dear Mayor Gardella and trustees, I'm writing today to address the proposed idea to create more paid parking. While you as a board may have been working on this for some time, the proposal comes to our attention. The retail restaurant and nonprofit proprietors of Sag Harbor. In a late hour with little warning and just thirty days until the start of the high season. Bay Street Theater is one of the largest economic engines of the village. Based on the American for the Arts, Arts and Economic Prosperity Calculator. The total dollar spent locally by Bay Street and our audience exceeds seven million dollars each year. Tens of thousands of people come through Sag Harbor each year to visit the theater. And most of them visit Main Street for lunch, dinner or ice cream following a show. Given this impact, it would have been reasonable and courteous to invite members of the chamber, the retail restaurant and nonprofit proprietors. Into the discussion about the prospect for and timing of paid parking, more paid parking. We deal with this issue every single day. Last year, I, Tracy Mitchell, personally had to explain how the app worked. Or what to do when people could not get internet reception to many people. In addition, I know of people who set alarms to move their cars to avoid fees. The current free parking in the three day lot or at the perimeter of the village. For example, Ryson Street fills up earlier than ever before. The real question is why is the village making this decision without the input from the chamber and at the start of the summer? As a board member of the chamber, I believe we could have helped with creative solutions mitigating issues with this proposal. We all have many questions, not the least of which is what is the fundamental purpose of more paid parking? Can we as a village jointly explore the range of options such as many that were already discussed, uh, remote lots, shuttles, structured parking? Respectfully, the possibilities are out there if proper time is given to study the matter. There are simply too many questions that impact the businesses and residents of Sag Harbor that need to be answered prior to implementing these major changes. I think we've put our heads together during the off season, we could come up with a solution for everyone. But if we rush into this and create chaos at the start of summer and annoy our many employees. Uh, and visitors, we will pay the price. We ask the board to table the proposal and allow for time to bring the chamber and local businesses and organizations and residents into the conversation. As we are all the ones that must deal with this daily. Respectfully submitted Tracy Mitchell, executive director, Bay Street Theater and Sag Harbor Center for the Arts. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else on?
Douglas Newby, two forty-four Madison. Good evening, everyone, and I, I, I welcome the um, the thought that's been going into this. Um, uh, we all know that the village has an acute problem with, with parking. Um, I think one of the issues that is. Uh, not being particularly addressed in the, in the comment session, uh. Um, trustee Corish certainly addressed it. And those who've been following the, the budget discussions are aware, um, that the. The, the village is facing a significant challenge. Um, as trustee Corish pointed out, uh, inflation for municipalities is uh. Something like eight percent, but the, the cap on uh increased uh taxes is uh, is two percent. So um, the village needs to be looking at alternative ways of bringing in additional revenue. Um, it seems to me that the geographical area, the only geographical. Area that makes sense for exceptions to paying is. Uh, people who live and pay taxes in the village. Um, as soon as you extend beyond village taxpayers, then people in East Hampton, Southampton, Bridgehampton. Um, one-one-nine-six-three, etc. Are all going to make legitimate arguments that they. Um, view Sag Harbor as their, their local base and uh. Um, they can make the same, same claim for an exception. So it does seem to me that. Um, uh, limiting the um, the fee exception to. Uh, residents and taxpayers in the village makes sense. I do think um, clearly for employees, some of the suggestions um. Uh, seem to make a great deal of sense in the longer term. Um, it also seems to. Uh, be an obvious uh, uh, opportunity to look to see if there are places where. Uh, parking outside the village with a, with a shuttle, whether it's free for employees. Um, workers in the, in the village that um, should be paid for by um, others. Um, you know, will be something to look at in the, in the longer term. Um. I, I do take the, the point about the, the timing. Um, I wonder whether um, there's any flexibility to lower the uh, the rates for. The first year as a sort of transition, see how it works and then uh. Um, based on input over the, over the summer and next winter, uh, determine um. Uh, rates for parking rates for next year. Um, but I do think that, uh, you know, with an hour free and the uh. Um, the, the, the time where uh, fees would be charged. It's would seem a lot less onerous than, um, I think some people have suggested this evening. So. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. We have any, one other person in here? Yes, John. Jenny Beals on Zoom, by the way, Kate.
Hello, good afternoon, nine seventy Hampton Street. Nice to see you all. Uh, I'm here as a president, not as a member of the planning board, but before about to work the planning board. And basically, I just want to say very briefly, I support fully what you're doing. Um, the devil is in the details. As you know, as we know, um, we have a parking problem now. People talk about if you do this, something terrible will happen, but I spoke to multiple people this past winter who told me. Uh, if they want to, they, they don't come in from Sagrifonic. They don't come in from Vicamden because they can't park. So by turning over the parking spaces and making attempt to do something about it, uh, I think that's a positive thing. And uh, I, I think you're going in the right direction. I support you. That's completely my one thing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
You want to say something, Alan?
I just want to add, add two things. First of all, the chamber has approximately a hundred and forty-two chamber members, not all of them are within the village. So to Jesse's point, that, that will be something that to look at in terms of how many employees are parking. The other thing is, um, as an employee who sits and looks at that three hour lot. Uh, right behind the express office there, I'm going to tell you who parks there.
The three day lot or the?
The three day lot.
Three day lot, sorry you said three hour, yeah.
Three day lot, who parks? I'm going to tell you who parks there. I park there when I can find a spot, but um. It, there are um, a few businesses uh with commercial vehicles who do not have a brick and mortar in the village district anywhere. Who for the last three or four years have been using it constantly as parking. They, they never leave.
Full time.
Um, so there's, so they're there, um, and they're constantly there. Um, then there's the bank employees, the um, foot massage employees and nail massage employees who all seem to trade off shifts and wait. They hold the spots, one leaves, the other one comes in. They're using it, they're using it legitimately. They're not staying there for three days. They're using it during their, their business hours, but. They're using it all day, so they're using it. Um, there's American Hotel, uh, resident, uh, people who are staying there. I generally attribute the nicer cars and people with suitcases to American Hotel guests. They're using it as a three day lot. They're staying there longer. Um, but there are businesses that are just parking cars there and they are mostly businesses who I look at and say. Well, they're not a member of the chamber, they do not have a brick and mortar in the village business and they've got three vans there, two cars, employees parking. I never understood whether it was a three day lot. I don't think it ever needed to be a three day lot. Maybe the American Hotel needed it and I adore them and don't want to take away from their eight or nine rooms that they have. And where are their people going to park? We stayed there for three days. Okay, that's going to be a problem for them. But that's a small, very small group of people that are using that lot. Otherwise, it's staff from the American Hotel will do the same thing. One guy leaves and the other guy waits. I see the wagers, he's leaving, the other one comes in. So there's a lot of staff using that park, not for three days. And then there's a bunch of people using it to park their commercial vehicle.
They're running a business out of it.
That's using that lot.
Well, that's what we want to try to avoid. Yeah. Thank you. Kathleen? I think you're going to be our last speaker tonight unless there's somebody else that wants to talk.
Thank you, guys. I'm really, really happy that this is back and being worked on. And I think it is really important, been important for six years. So I'm really glad to see it. It is aggressive. It's aggressive, but I think it's good. So I think it's all wonderful and if we can solve the employee thing, I think, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Can I turn one thing into what Jesse said?
Right.
When we were, when we had the conversation today, we looked at this issue. And there were a couple of areas that people looked at. One was another rental property that's behind over.
Yes, we've, we've, that's been investigated, yes.
The other thing is we were talking with churches and schools, which were empty. So just to keep that in mind, that was a lot of the time. Okay, good. Just make sure that's on the list.
I think the biggest, to me, the biggest thing that's come out of this meeting is addressing the employee issue. And that's, that's top. All right.
Yeah, no, I hear you. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming and giving us your opinions and much appreciated.
Thanks for the conversation. There's a lot of good information here and I appreciate it.
Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Oh, wait, we have, wait, wait, wait. We have more on the agenda. Excuse me. I oppose adjourning. I want to stay here. I'm not going to adjourn. I want to stay. So we have a resolution to uh.
We're still in session.
Yeah, we're still in session.
Please. Thank you.
So we have a resolution to appoint our election inspection chairperson Nathan Brown. Election inspector Gail Heine, poll clerk Brenda Plosia. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We also have a resolution. That the mayor and board of trustees authorize the advertising for a quest for launch service for the twenty twenty-four season. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Corish. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What's that?
How do you get a copy of the RFP?
You just come into our.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anybody opposed? So, so moved. Nilo Oza and Anthony Madonna of Guildhall Teen Arts. This is the presentation that you made, Bob. That the.
Yep.
Right, what was it called? The Rubber Ducky presentation, I believe?
Bathtub project.
Bathtub project to raise awareness for our local climate reality through, through art on May tenth, twenty twenty-four. From seven thirty to nine thirty P M. At Kid Squid Brewery. You want to make that motion, Bob?
Sure.
Motion by trustee Plum, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corish. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Trustee Corish, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.